So I'll call to the order of the regular Oregon City City Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2015. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
So we'll do the flag suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no ceremonies or proclamations at this point, so now is the time for citizen comments. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior speaking citizens shall complete a comment form and deliver it to the city recorder. City commission does not generally engage in a dialogue with those making comments, but may refer to the issue to the city manager. Do we have any citizen comments? Ooh, that's a record. Okay, moving on. Adoption of the agenda. Everybody happy with the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, public hearings. Fifteen dash one eleven, resolution number fifteen dash zero five, closing unnecessary funds within the accounting system and adopting a supplemental budget to establish new funds. This exciting piece is brought to you by Finance Director White Harno.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday and members of the city commission. Yes, I have a riveting presentation for you. First, I want to say that recently we had St. Patrick's Day, and I have wanted to share with you that I have a Japanese exchange student staying with us, and she's wonderful. She brought all these gifts. Remember when we had Dave went to Japan for a conference, and so they do the exchange. Well, my house is loaded with chocolate. And I explained to her that this holiday, this American holiday, St. Patrick's Day, is coming, and she said, "What's that for?"
American holiday?
Well, you bear with me. So she looked at me and said, "Well, what's that for?" And I guess I really didn't know. I said, "Well, it's based on St. Patrick." So I explained the whole green thing. Then I came into the office the next day with no green on. However, I had my buy local button, which is green, and I put it on and proudly displayed it and was good to go and didn't get pinched all day.
All right.
So do buy local, and thank you, business community, for the button. Now, I've got a couple of agenda items on here tonight, and they're related. So item six A is a resolution to close funds, and then also item seven A under general business is the second reading of a related ordinance. And Mayor, of course, I'll present each as you'd like, but I think I'll just try to cover most of the detail with this item. And the reason we have two items is because budget law in Oregon has a lot of specific requirements. It kind of nails down how you have to do everything, and so we're required to hold a public hearing on a certain aspect of this transaction. And then the ordinance piece that comes a little bit later is because we just need to make some tweaks to the ordinance, very administrative in nature to allow this to happen. Now, what we're trying to do here is we know that this commission and the prior commission have made it really clear that we want to have very high standards for financial reporting, for stewardship of public funds. You know, coming in a couple of years ago, knew I noticed that we had exorbitant amount of funds compared to all of our neighbors. And also, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that we limit the number of funds so that the financial information is easy to digest, it's not diluted by a lot of funds. Oregon Department of Revenue also recommends that for a sound budget practice. So we went through and we analyzed each fund, and of course identified two major components that we need to do. We need to be able to report the information accurately, and also we need to maintain existing restrictions on any of the monies that we have. So whereas if the commission puts something in place that said we can only use these funds for a certain purpose, or if, for example, under state law, you can only use gas tax revenues to work on the streets, we need to make sure and we respect that segregation of the funds. So that said, we don't necessarily need a new fund for every little thing that happens. We can use separate line items to segregate those monies. Or in the case of an escalated need for segregation, we can have a separate division. So this agenda item, the resolution fifteen dash zero five, would close several funds, and under local budget law, there's no requirement to have a public hearing on that. The commission could just make that happen by resolution. However, local budget law does require that if you open new funds, you're required to have a public hearing, and so that's why that piece is required. We're opening two new funds. One is a capital facility fund, because your direction has been that we're moving forward with a lot of important community facilities. And the other is to create an entire SDC fund where we'll keep, make sure that all those monies are segregated. So what I'd like to ask Mayor is that you hold the public hearing, and whether or not there's comment, take that, and then pass resolution fifteen oh five to close the funds. And then after a few more items, we'll talk about the ordinance and have the second reading. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Then I will open the public hearing on resolution fifteen oh five. Seeing no public comments, I will close the public hearing. Any comments from the commission? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept resolution number fifteen oh five, closing unnecessary funds within the accounting system and adopting a supplemental budget to establish new funds.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Please push your buttons.
Come on, guys.
Whoops, I pushed.
As if Mr. Smith has a hard time pushing people's buttons. So next thing, fifteen dash one five eight, ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero two, adopting the first six-month extension of the existing moratorium on land development, building, and sewer permit approvals in certain areas within Oregon City due to a lack of sanitary sewer system capacity and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lewis?
So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for taking a little bit of time to listen to this. Also very important and interesting.
Exciting.
Exciting topic. I guess I'll take this opportunity to just give you a little update, because I think a lot of people are curious about how we're doing with our, with the sewer moratorium project, so I want to do that first. And then I want to just talk about the fact that this is a required extension. It's almost a forced reminder that we're under a moratorium, and the way state law is written is the agencies that are under that, they need reminders, the elected body needs to be reminded about that moratorium and needs to hold, maybe hold staff accountable a little bit for completing that work. So that's kind of what we're here to do tonight. And so just with regard to the moratorium projects, a couple of things have happened. We have executed an agreement with, well, you actually authorized the execution of an agreement with consulting firm, two different consulting firms, actually, on two of the four projects that are listed. So we're moving full steam ahead with design. We think we have some good news about that, but we're kind of waiting to see, because we're doing some verification in the field, just to make sure some of the findings that we found in the field are going to work for solutions that may actually reduce some of the pipe work that we had originally planned through use of a diversion. So we're kind of excited about that, and we're hopeful that'll happen. If that happens, then it means we could even move forward a little quicker on the third project. So no guarantees there yet, but I'm just telling you, that effort's moving ahead. Our intent would be whatever we need to build under these first two projects, that would be built this summer, starting this summer. So I think that would be good. And then, once that, once that project was built to a point where it could be used, then immediately we would come back to the commission and lift the moratorium on those areas. And that, the area that is impacted by these first two projects is the area along 12th Street, and we call it 12th, 13th, and Division, so up near the hospital. So there was a lot of concern initially about the impacts to the hospital's master plan implementation. So I think we're going to be well ahead of that. We haven't, we haven't really heard from the hospital on how soon they're planning to move forward with that, but we think we'll be ahead of schedule with that. So I think that's good news. This moratorium is something that's required at six months. I think we, if you remember, we have close to seven years, but we have to do several extensions. And so that's what this ordinance is about, is extending an additional six months. It's required by state law, doesn't change anything. We still are notifying those property owners that come in for development that are in the moratorium area of kind of the conditions that they have to comply with while we're in the moratorium. So other than that, Bill, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the state law requires us to come back every six months. The other important piece of it is that the current moratorium expires March 31st, and so it would have to be, this has to be adopted as an emergency to make sure we meet that and keep it in place.
And this is not a public hearing, this is just an ordinance?
I believe this is a public hearing.
Right.
It's six B.
Oh, okay. So with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero two. Are there any comments from the public? I don't see anything. Then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. West?
So, Mr. Lewis, how did you, how did the city decide which one to do first of these four areas? How did they prioritize it? I know I heard you say something about the hospital, but there's other buildable areas and, you know, there, it's all buildable, so what, how did you choose that?
Well, we knew based on the rates, the adjustments that we had, that we had to phase these, because the revenues in wouldn't keep up with the cost if we took them all on at once. So that was kind of the first thing, we need to phase these projects in. The other was listening to the community with regard to which projects made the most sense, and I think these two were most prevalent. And also fairly straightforward, at least that's the way we saw the projects.
Easier fixes?
And, yeah, and so the next one is on Lynn Avenue. That one was also had a fair amount of development potential in that particular drainage basin as opposed to the fourth project, which is pretty much a built-out basin. So we were, we were looking at it based on potential for development.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Then I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Shaw?
I move for passage of ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero two, adopting the first six-month extension to the existing moratorium.
And declaring an emergency.
And declaring an emergency.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw? Oh, sweet, sorry.
Do the reading first, yeah.
Okay.
Ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero two, an ordinance extending an existing moratorium on land development, building, and sewer permit approvals in certain areas within the city of Oregon City due to a lack of sanitary sewer capacity for an additional six months and declaring an emergency.
Now, call the roll.
Yep. Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Thank you.
And it passes.
Okay, on to general business. Fifteen dash one forty-six, second reading of ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero one, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code to allow for the closing of unnecessary funds within the accounting system. Back to the scintillating wife, Harno.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday and commission members. This is so good, I get to talk about it twice.
[laughter]
I did want to point out for the record as well, there's no need to revote, but I put on each commissioner's chair a clerical correction to the resolution that we just read. And basically, we had just polled from the appropriation, the beginning contingency balance the wrong numbers, so those have been corrected in the resolution that we just passed. This general business item that doesn't require a public hearing, it's just the second reading of the ordinance, and the first reading was held on March 4th, and I explained it pretty much in detail at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Nothing? Then I would entertain a motion.
I will move for the second reading of ordinance fifteen dash one zero zero one.
And final adoption.
And final adoption.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Mr. Gubaisman?
Ordinance number fifteen dash one zero zero one, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending sections of the Oregon City Municipal Code to allow for the closing of unnecessary funds within the city's financial accounting structure.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And it passes.
Okay, moving on. Fifteen dash one fifty-nine, resolution number one five zero six, amending the Oregon City's local share, local legacy share allocation projects for the 2006 Metro Natural Areas Bond Measure. This would be Community Development Director Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. We are requesting approval of resolution number fifteen oh six to amend Oregon City's local legacy share allocation. So essentially, as part of Metro's open space bond money, a certain portion of that is sent back to local jurisdictions for acquisition as they see fit. Part of the agreement is that we would adopt a list of projects or target areas that where these funds would be spent. We are requesting that the target list be amended to include the design and construction of the Riverwalk, so we're very clear that we could use those funds for that purpose. And then removal of the other projects, as we are proposing to use all the remaining funds in that local share, which is approximately $340,580. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Archer to give a little bit of update about the discussions that have gone on up to this point.
Well, just to, just to, I think it's important to know that, first of all, staff is supportive, park staff is supportive, but Parks and Rec Committee, PRAC, has reviewed this on at least two occasions, and they have voted to support this, this redirecting of these funds, and they're very supportive.
I have a question. So where were the funds being, what projects were they being redirected from?
Let's see. Got that list in the staff report here.
Holcomb?
I think Kanema was still on there.
Oh, the front, right.
Holcomb, Holcomb Creek.
Holcomb.
Okay, there we go.
Holcomb Creek, and also Myers Road, Coffield Creek watershed area.
Okay, and they can always be brought back next time for the next round?
This is a one-time program based on the Metro bond that was passed in 2006. So the use of these funds for this purpose, there's about $340,000 and some change left in our, in our local share. This would, the use would exhaust that fund for us, for our local share.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be a next time. But I do want to note, something else I meant to include in my comments was that we've also utilized these funds for a couple of property purchases. So the, the top two priorities on the prior list before this amended list, the Glen Oak Road property was purchased with a portion of that coming from this fund, and a parcel in Kanema that's part of the open space area there was purchased using these funds.
Okay, so it's doing a lot of different things.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, let's talk. How do I do it? Okay.
Commissioner West?
I think that the legacy project with the walkway down there is a far more important project to do at this point in time, and I think this is a good idea for redirect funds.
Thank you.
It's nice that we have the flexibility to do it.
Anybody else? Motion?
I move that we pass resolution fifteen six, amending Oregon. Can you guys take that from you?
No, no.
Okay.
You're the motion maker.
Thank you, Mayor.
Designated motion maker.
So moved by Commissioner Polly, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? Do we need to read this? No. It's a resolution, so call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And it passes.
On to the consent agenda. Section allows city commission to consider routine items that require no discussion and can be approved in one comprehensive motion. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No, now make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would make, or I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated on our agenda tonight.
Second?
I second that.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And that passes.
How many liquor permits do we have on Main Street now?
Yeah, well, it is what it is. So, moving on. Communications, city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up tonight, I want to ask John Lewis to give you an update on the decommissioning of the elevator illumination project. We, we had scheduled that work earlier, and Commissioners Smith and Commissioner Polly had a few questions about that, so we postponed that decommissioning, had a meeting with them. It was a very productive meeting, explained the costs and so forth, and what was, what we'd like to do with the money instead of buying really expensive light bulbs for that projector. So I'm going to ask John to just give you a quick update on that.
I would like to hear it.
And I'm going to ask Martin Montalvo to come up and do that for me, because he, he's really done a great job of, first of all, doing the, helping the artist and Main Street with the installation. And I will tell you that that was not an easy task to get done with railroad and, and electrical and lack of funding, and we got the elevator painted, and there's lots of things that were done in anticipation of this facility coming down and being decommissioned, and so he can give you a...
I thought you were going to let Martin do this.
What's that?
I thought you were going to let Martin do this.
I am, I am.
He gets to do all the good stuff.
So I'm just saying that Martin has done an outstanding job, and I appreciate him working on tearing down all his incredible effort to get it up. Go with that, Martin.
Appreciate that. So just to give you guys a little backstory, the project that we completed in the elevator about a year ago was actually a two-part project. There was a national endowment for the arts grant that paid for the light art projection portion. Then the city, as part of the cost share, had to contribute in-kind services, and what we decided to do was to renovate the elevator. It was in need of those renovations, so we constructed a project in conjunction with the arts project, which was an arts alliance project and a Main Street project, and we co-mingled those two projects, working together with the city kind of acting as the project manager. The entire intent from the inception of that project was that the projector would last for one year. That's what the NEA grant stipulated, that's what the funds that were set aside for it all were dedicated for. So at the end of this year, we made plans for the decommissioning of the actual projecting, projection system. The cost of maintaining the projection system on an annual basis, recurring cost, is in excess of $14,000. It is not a cost that Public Works Operations, the Arts Alliance, or the Main Street organization was ready to bear. So what we've prepared to do is some alternatives for decommissioning the art piece, and then taking a look at the funds that we can recoup from the sale of the equipment and reinvesting that back into the elevator. So rather than setting up a recurring cost of excess of $14,000, the cash value for the projection system itself, for comparable systems that have a little less time on the batteries, or on the system itself than ours, is about $25,000 to $30,000. The Arts Alliance is going to help us with their network of people that they know that are interested in it, with marketing it, selling it, and then we'll make arrangements to have it transported to the new buyer. Whatever funds are recouped, we have a series of options that we'll present to you guys at a later date as to how we want to finish renovating the elevator. The city's investment in renovating the elevator was in excess of $200,000 last year, and we still were not able to complete everything that we had hoped for. So for Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Polly, we outlined just a few of those options. We'll bring back a staff report for you guys to say this is what staff is recommending that we take the money that we recoup and finish the renovations in the observation deck. So we're going to do something with the neon lighting that's up there. It's LED right now. Originally, when it was constructed in 1955, 54, sorry, it was neon, and we have a really nice, architecturally appropriate LED neon alternative that we're looking at, and we'll bring that back to you guys.
I have one question.
Sure.
So there's got to be a process, a process by which we dispose of city assets, and so is going through the Arts Alliance, is that going to meet that public process piece?
I would say yes. Usually, it's a competitive process that we're required to go through, so we've had several items that we've actually posted on a system like eBay and rid ourselves of that equipment. So we could take, send it to auction. In this case, we think we've got a lot better opportunity of actually floating it through the arts community and getting the best bids that we can obtain, but doing that in a public forum so that anybody that's interested in it can bid on it.
It'll be advertised publicly through the Arts Commission, kind of acting as the agent, and any entity that's interested will be able to bid on the process as long as we have qualifying bidders.
So is this projector, is that its only possible use, is some kind of an art installation?
No, no. No, in fact, Martin's told me that, you know, the movies in the park, we could probably broadcast across the city if we wanted to with that projector. It's a pretty powerful machine.
There you go. The original cost of that projector is $87,000. The one that we bought was a used item, and we bought it for about $35,000. We still think we can get like anywhere between $25,000 to $30,000 out of it. There are numerous uses for it. This is an industrial-grade product. We had thought, you know, hey, parks could use it, you just replace the battery, or not the battery, the bulb itself.
Yeah.
But that's still a $6,000 investment. It's a little overkill for movies in the park, but there are some options that we floated about. Really, we think the best option is liquidate it and then reinvest the dollars into the facility.
Oh, and I wasn't, I wasn't second guessing that. I was just wondering if maybe, you know, we could reach out a little bit far past the arts community into, you know, some of the multimedia companies and other things to see if maybe there's somebody else out there who might pay us a little bit more money.
That's why the Arts Alliance is the best agent for us with that. They have all of those connections, and they know numerous parties that have already been talking to them, saying, hey, we might be interested.
All right. Mr. Parno?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, we could project the city's financial reports across the entire city using this. Just something for you.
We're trying to actually foster growth and excitement, and I wouldn't want to put everyone to sleep.
Okay, moving on with my reports.
Thank you for your time.
I just have a really quick comment. I just want to thank all the staff for acting on this. I want to thank Rocky for making the call. When we originally had the art piece done on there, we knew that part had an expiration date, but we also knew that we would own the equipment. So the thought of taking it down, you know, we kind of wanted to step back and look at the other options. And when we had our meeting together, I was really pleasantly surprised you already were working with the Arts Alliance to try to troubleshoot and come up with ideas of, you know, what we can do and how we can turn this around and make this useful and make it, you know, put it back into the elevator. And so, thank you, thank you for that, coming up with possible solutions, and that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Next, I want to ask Tony Conkle to provide you a quick update on the project.
Thank you. As you are well aware, vote, any annexations in Oregon City are required to go to a vote of the people per our charter, and that was put into that charter by a citizen initiative. Back in 2012, House Bill 4090 passed the House, but it was, it did die in the Senate. And House Bill 4090, the intent of it was to essentially circumvent voter annexation. It would have required local jurisdictions to extend services to properties inside the UGB but outside the city limits. At that time, we came to the, I came to the commission and had a discussion about this, and I was directed by the commission to essentially go down to Salem, work with League of Oregon Cities to defeat the measure, to defeat the proposal. So it's back, so there's another attempt. There's Senate Bills 497 and 498, which are intended to do exactly what House Bill 4090 did. So I wanted to bring this to your attention.
Um, I had support of the commission last time, uh, to provide information to our legislature in opposition to the House bill. Uh, Mayor Neely also came down and testified in front of, um, uh, several of the legislative sessions that were put together on this issue. Um, so if there is direction to the contrary, I am going to continue to lobby against, um, this, sent, these two Senate bills unless I hear otherwise from the commissioners and receive other direction.
Concern we, that we really have is being compelled in some way to not only circumvent our charter, but the more, I mean, not more important, but a very compelling reason for me to be concerned is being required to provide urban services, city-level services to places that aren't annexed and paying, uh, a tax bill.
I think one of our, one of our concerns last time around, I don't remember the number exactly off my head, but I think it's around eleven hundred or twelve hundred acres would immediately become available for urbanization that are between the city limits and the urban growth boundary of Oregon City. Um, that uncontrolled development, um, not only raises issues for us to provide those services, but it really does completely circumvent the wishes of the local citizens when it comes to voter annexation. The state really should address voter annexation, as that's the issue, rather than creating these loopholes and, and ways to get around, uh, what the locals have decided is in their best interest and how they want to decide issues.
Assuming the measure were to pass both the House and the Senate, be signed by Governor Brown, what options would we have to, are there, would there be any legal options for us?
Um, interesting question. We haven't looked at that too much. Uh, so far, you know, certainly last legislature and this one, they don't seem to be gaining much traction. Um, I think if it were to actually start looking like this, uh, movement, that might be something to, to look into and see just what we can do, you know, enhance service charges or, or, you know, other things that might, uh, uh, allow us to, to deal with some of the issues that we're concerned about.
There's likely to be amendments, as we know.
Right. So again, making those same assumptions, would we be, have the ability to charge a different rate for water, sewer, and those kinds of things to those places that are outside the city limits versus those places that are inside the city limits?
Typically, the answer is, is yes, that there can be a differential rate. Um, there are rate-making principles that you, you have to follow, and how that plays itself out is, is something we'd have to dig into a little bit more because we historically have not done this. And, you know, I know that there are some, uh, people reserving, receive city services outside of city limits, but those tend to be, you know, one-off type, uh, situations.
And I think it's more than just making sure that we recuperate the costs associated with the services that we provide. There's an equity issue there in terms of they will, they will pay county taxes, they will not pay city taxes, they are not in the city limits. And a good example of this is Bull Mountain in Washington County. You have a highly urbanized area that receives multiple city services at county rates, and the ability to try to annex them into the cities has been a mess.
And they will never want to annex.
Why would they?
And they won't have a motivation to, because they've already got the services that they really care about. The county sheriff will respond.
Sort of like O'Grove.
Yes.
And then if you do annex them, you know, just from the voice of experience, we did
that in Grants Pass, annexed the whole Redwood area, then you've annexed that and you've got a lot of angry new people to talk to up here.
You know, it also raises a governance issue.
Yeah.
Who, who, who approves the subdivision? Does Clackamas County get to approve all the urbanization in our UGB areas?
Yeah.
Do we? I mean, those are probably issues that could be worked through.
So what are, what is the likelihood of this making it out of one chamber?
It did last time.
It did last time. It made it out of the House last time, thirty-one twenty-nine.
So...
And right now, this is being proposed in the Senate. It's being sponsored by a Democrat, um, so there are concerns. And our concern is that right now Senate Bill four ninety-seven and four ninety-eight have not been marked up. Um, right now, they have an exemption to jurisdictions that have a charter requirement, but I have a feeling that that is going to be the first thing redlined out, and it's going to take on the form of House Bill forty-ninety very quickly.
Okay.
We'll keep you apprised, and Mayor, we may ask you or Commission President, President Polly to accompany Tony when the time comes, if you're able. Of course. So last but not least, um, Russ Reiner, our friend at the Lamont Falls Medical Center, uh, they are applying to participate in a federal program, and they need an MOU from the city. And most of you probably know the city manager can sign MOUs, um, the commission has to sign IGA's, intergovernmental agreements. Um, I don't typically sign those without reporting to you what they are, so, um, this says that in order to participate in the drug discount program established under section three forty B of the Public Health Services Act. Basically, it's a large federal grant program. The hospital has to have an agreement with the city where we acknowledge that they are providing services to underprivileged and under-income people who don't qualify for Medicare or Medicaid benefits. And Russ has been kind enough to provide me a brochure about the information. I've had the city attorney review the MOU. It's very short, it's two pages, and it basically says we acknowledge that they are providing services to indigent folks in our community, and we, we know that, um, from our own experience. And so I just want to make sure the commission doesn't have any questions about that and any concerns about it before I do that. It's essential for them to have that agreement from us for them to compete for the grant money. So just want to be a good partner with our local hospital. And with that, Your Honor, that's the conclusion of my report.
Okay, so it's on to Commissioner Comments. Who wants to go first?
No, I, I don't have any updates on the state heritage area application. Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, we're having a, a retreat on it, and so I'll, I'll see where there, where that's at, if we're going to be ready to go by the next state heritage meeting and to get it approved. And then we're also doing our strategic planning, uh, the second part of it, on our whole organization of the Lamont Falls Heritage Area Coalition, so. Where we want to go is a straight hair, a state heritage area. That's tomorrow morning.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, in addition to the elevator meeting, had a meeting with Scott Archer and, um, Matt Davis of, uh, Architecture Research, Research Group, um, who is, um, working on, um, a study, um, with various partners in Oregon City with a grant from SHPO to, um, bring forward eventually to the commission, uh, a recommendation for programming and governance structure for Irma Tinger House. Um, so I met with Scott and Matt and, um, had a pre-meeting before they met with, um, the Friends of Irma Tinger House group, um, and that was a really good meeting. Um, got some feedback from the Friends group, which is not an official Friends group, but is in the process of becoming official. Um, I think the Friends group's hope is that they come forward, um, with a structure as a Friends group and a recommendation kind of at the same time that, that, that Matt comes forward with the recommendation to the commission as well. Um, and I think that that, that, that process is going to continue with discussions for, from, um, other, um, local heritage groups and, and museums, and also, um, outside of Oregon City to see what's working for them and how it can, um, shed some light on how to, um, figure out what's going to happen with the future of the House once it's open. Um, I think that was the only other meetings I've had.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Um, so I'm not sure, you know, I think we, I do these, I think we all do these things. We go to these functions and stuff, and it's kind of on behalf of our representation from the city and stuff, so, uh, I did go to the Mills on Wheels fundraiser, uh, which was pretty nice. It was up at the Ainsworth Estate up there. And then also, uh, was a, um, judge for the Oregon City High School Forensics Debate Team last Saturday and stuff, so that's all I did.
What is forensics debate?
It's actually, uh, it's actually just English debate, uh, you know, um, language. It's the, it used to be the debate club, and, you know, it's just a debate club, and they actually call it forensic. I always thought forensics was kind of a...
Science.
Police thing, you know, you see on TV.
Crime lab.
Yeah, crime lab thing, but it's not. It's actually a...
Mayor, I, I did neglect one thing on my report. I'm scheduled to be on a vacation next week, uh, all of next week, and, um, but I am going to be delivering a speech to the Oregon City Business Alliance on my day off on Monday? Or Tuesdays? Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, eleven-thirty.
It's always Tuesday.
I'm glad it's Tuesday, because I'm not ready. Uh, so Tuesday, and then I may also be attending the regional wastewater capacity, whatever we call it, Dan, I don't know, but we'll be going to that little party, uh, as well, and I'm, I may be there, I'm not sure yet if I'm going to be there, depends on how long my, our company stays. Um, and if I am, I'm going to be in the jurisdiction at, the whole time, but, um, if I'm, I feel like I'm not going to be able to attend to duties if they arise, then I'm going to ask Wyatt Parno to be my acting city manager on my vacation. So, that's it.
You just passing that around to give everybody a little experience?
Scott was busy, it was his turn. Tony's over there, Wyatt's here. He's not done it before. He's certainly qualified, and there's a bump there, sufficient to buy a hamburger and a, a chocolate shake, so.
Commissioner Polly?
All right. I just have a couple of things. Um, I attended the State of the City last Friday. I'm sure you'll say more on this, but you probably won't give yourself a compliment, so I will. Um, it was very well-attended. It's put on by the Chamber of Commerce, so it was a great show of support from business people as well as other elected officials in the region. Um, and it was very exciting, again, to, to see everything that's in the works, and there were some great questions from the audience, which were answered really great. I heard a couple of people at my table, I, I really liked how he just gets to the point and how he's no-nonsense, and it was, um, it was, it was a very well-attended, uh, State of the City, so it was great to see all the support that our city has. And then Arbor Day is coming up, April thirteenth, and the last one was at John McGlaughlin School, and it was during school hours, so it was pretty much just with the school. So this one is going to be different because on April thirteenth, there is no school that day. So it'll be very open to the public, and it'll be Eastham, so it'll be a nice big area. And it actually starts at ten-thirty with like a day camp, and they're going to plant trees. And then, um, for the general public, from one until three, there, um, is going to be tree planting, and I will be there. And, uh, last year, uh, Mayor, then Doug Neely kind of took the stage and he hugged a tree and got pictures with everybody, so...
We gotta do that again.
Well, I guess I will have to do it. I guess I will have to do it.
Unfortunately, how are we working?
Yeah, so I will have to do it. And I will.
We can't refute the rumors that you're a tree hugger then.
Yeah. Come on.
But, but anyway, I hope, I hope lots of people can come because it's really great that it's going to be in a, a place that all the public, and if you drive up Malala around the corner, you'll see, at Eastham Arbor Day. Maybe you'll see the big tree.
All right, cool.
On banners.
On a banner.
Defense. Okay, so the last one's mine. I did do the State of the City on Friday. Um, it was a, it was a enjoyable time and, uh, and talked to a lot of fine folks and, uh, next year I'll try to make it a little bit longer, but not, um, not Doug longer. Um, so, uh, after that, uh, later in the afternoon, I had about an hour and a half meeting with, uh, Superintendent Didway from the Oregon City Schools, and we just generally talked about, you know, how the city can continue to cooperate back and forth and some of the, uh, some of the pressures he's under with the, uh, the legislature allocations for schools this year and, uh, you know, other ways the city and, and schools can